Good evening, everyone. I will open the meeting. Please rise to the podium.
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll open the meeting up to public comment. Front-end public comment is for agenda items only. So if anyone has any comments regarding the agenda, please stand, state your name, and you can ask a question.
First, Kevin Rizzo. Coming up tonight, let the board know, there's been obviously a lot of conversation in the state of New York regarding cell phones. And I know that's an agenda item tonight. Just this past week, myself, Cory, and Dr. Squirrel, we're gonna head down to Terrytown Town as Nicet is unveiling their cellphone policy or their cellphone plan or initiative. Obviously, it got canceled due to Thursday's weather and postponed until March. So I don't know what their stance is gonna be at this point, but I do believe it's gonna align something very close to what the governor as they're lobbying the governor to post a, what seems to be a felt-to-bell ban of cell phones across the state of New York. Many of my constituents and districts surrounding me that have already gone into cellphone policies have remarked back that they're positive and the cafeteria is louder and there is obviously more engagement in classrooms, is what I'm hearing. However, at this point in time, I'm asking the board, I don't know if you have intentions on voting tonight, is it possible to delay that further back? A possible another month to see what the governor is gonna put out? Give our administrator, Mr. Opitz, and his new assistant principals some time to settle in? Because this is going to be an unveiling and it's gonna be a process that I don't know if we're ready for to start tomorrow. So just food for thought at this point. If it is at all possible to delay that process so we can provide the support that we need for our principal in unveiling this plan, that would be my only request at this point.
We'll have that conversation during the second reading of the proposed policy. Okay, anybody else for a public comment? Right, we have our special presentations this evening. It's our leaders of the pack and the elementary school.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Tonight's leader of the pack is Stella Bird. Come on up, Stella. So, Mr. White, your classroom teacher said Stella has had a great year academically. Stella shows excellent effort and she is highly motivated to learn new things. Stella is reading above grade level. Stella also loves to write. She writes with enthusiasm and has been adding more detail to her assignments. Stella has a wonderful and caring personality. She shows empathy for her peers and she tries to make others feel better when they are upset. Stella is kind and thoughtful and almost always has a smile throughout the day. She always offers to help in the classroom. Stella enjoys humor and often likes to share jokes with her classmates. Stella has all the potential to be a leader in the future and she should be very proud of her efforts to become the best she can be as a student and as a person. Ms. Bavinow, your art teacher says Stella is such a polite person. Each time that she sees me in the hall, she always goes out of her way to greet me. Ms. Hughes, your steam teacher said, "I have had the pleasure of watching Stella grow from a kindergarten student to a responsible and respectful fifth grader in my time here at Highland." Stella has always put her best effort into every project and has met every challenge head-on. Her being a chosen leader of the pack is a well-deserved honor. Mrs. McCaffrey, your music teacher, said Stella always comes to music eager to learn. She's always participating and always has some great insights into what we are discussing. She also has, is a pleasure to have in chorus as she's consistently making great choices and singing her best. Great job. So, there's a few more. Mrs. Petroshak, your library teacher, said Stella has such an enthusiasm for learning and is such a bright and inquisitive student. I truly enjoy having her in my class. Mr. Helmer, your PE teacher, she said Stella is a pleasure to have in physical education class. She is always prepared for activity, displays a positive attitude, and is willing to help her classmates. And Mr. Smith said you stand out for not just what she does, but for who she is. Okay? Congratulations, Stella.
We've got the paparazzi here tonight.
Good evening, everybody. I am really excited to present Kayden Gator, our seventh grade leader of the pack for the middle school. Now, we had many, many amazing things to say about Kayden. Mr. Donahue, your English teacher, says that Kayden works diligently inside and outside of the classroom. He advocates for himself and is genuinely kind and caring towards others. Mrs. DeJocobo said Kayden is responsible. He has a relaxed, easy-going personality. He is thoughtful and kind to his peers. Mr. Pollard shared that Kayden is a student who thinks deeply about every question, gives his all to every assignment, and shows kindness and consideration to every person. Mrs. Neer shared that Kayden is a kind, funny, and hard-working student who has made a lot of academic and social growth. Kayden puts effort into all academic tasks and is well-liked by teachers and peers. Ms. Burnett said that Kayden is a kind, thoughtful student who is always respectful in class. He's a hard worker and always willing to lend a hand. He is a worthy recipient of the leader of the pack designation. Ms. Besko, your math teacher, says that Kayden is a fantastic student who always takes charge of his learning. He never hesitates to ask questions or seek help when needed. He is incredibly responsible, gets his work done without reminders, and treats everyone with kindness and respect. His positive attitude and his work ethic make him a joy to have in class. Ms. Yankee said that Kayden is an awesome student who shows so much excitement in music. He brings interesting information and personal experiences to class that make the experience better for everyone. He is also such a hard-working student, making sure that he gets all of his work done. Kayden is a pleasure to have in music. Ms. Ivan shared that Kayden is a very hard-working student. He always participates in class, asks lots of questions, and is a great friend to other students. It's been a pleasure having Kayden in class and seeing him flourish as a student. Mr. Wells shared that he is an extremely hard-working, kind to others, and has shown lots of growth in French between quarters one and two. And finally, I had some things to say about Kayden because I'm lucky to say that I've known Kayden since he was in third grade. He was in one of my very first classes when I started at Highland. We learned how to Zoom remote teach together. I had the unique opportunity to see Kayden transform just from the student to the great brother, son, and human. And I'm really proud of you and glad to get to be in your daily life.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations Stella and Kayden on your leader of the pack. Very proud and look forward to having you guys open to high school eventually. This evening, I would like to present Angelis Cabrera-Hill, who is a senior here at Highland High School. Super proud. Gonna share a few blurbs from some of the faculty and staff here at the high school and wish her the best. First off, we have Ms. Lawback, her school counselor. It has been a joy getting to know Angelis over the years. She is a very kind and considerate person, not to mention focused and determined when it comes to her future goals. She is going into nursing and I think she will be an incredible fit for this occupation as she knows how to show empathy and care. She is a student I will miss next year because she always has a smile and is always such a positive influence on the building. Mr. Tatum, for English. I've loved having Angelis in the class this year. In public speaking, she worked incredibly hard to overcome the nervousness and anxiety that comes with presenting in front of a large group, much like we're doing right now. Her speeches were always heartfelt and genuine and she made incredible progress over the semester. She is a kind and selfless young woman who will make an amazing nurse. She embodies the empathy and compassion that the world so desperately needs right now. Congratulations. Mr. Miller, who is here in the room tonight, for social studies. I've had the privilege of being Angelis's teacher for economics, now participation in government. She is an incredible and well-rounded young adult. Angelis is intelligent, hard-working, open-minded, and overall a great student to work with. She is an asset to our class both personally and academically. She possesses a multitude of strengths that will serve her well as she enters the next chapter of her life. And then lastly, Coach Yearwood for flag football. Angelis is a dedicated, natural-born leader. She identifies that flag is a growing sport in the community and continues to overcome any challenges and obstacles that may come her way. She is a team player dedicated to building up her fellow teammates. Although she may be a quiet observer, it doesn't stop her from vocalizing her love for the sport and her teammates on and off the field. She is known by myself and her teammates as the mom of the team and as a heart of a giant. So with that being said, I want to congratulate Angelis.
All right, let's do a few pictures right here.
And she does have some peer support with her. That's great.
On behalf of the entire Board of Education, leaders of the pack, job well done. Congratulations. Or you can leave if you like. Congratulations. Next presentation is going to be our budget development. Budget season now, so we're gonna start off with an overview of where we're going with our budget. So our business official will take it.
Keep the excitement going, Mr. Verone. Is that what I hear?
Keep the smiles going.
Here we go. Hard act to follow.
It really is.
It's hard to beat the leaders of the pack. We'll give you a leader of the pack award if we can.
We're gonna have to get the budget. So, ladies and gentlemen, I'll start off by saying before I do the presentation, it has been a challenging and rewarding seven months. That's yes, of all seven months since I've been here at Highland. I want to thank you all for your patience and assistance and I would like to thank, my staff are not here, but I'd like to thank them if they're watching this for helping me with the slides. Otherwise, it would've been just Excel smut.
We thank them as well.
You will. I do not know a lot of the students, so it took a little while. But start off by saying tonight's presentation will cover the tax levy limit calculation. We'll go over the state aid executive revenue budget. We'll talk about the estimated 25, 26 revenue. We'll talk about the proposed bus referendum and we'll round it out with the budget planning calendar. So, the tax levy calculation is now in its 14th year of implementation. It ensures that the school districts properly tax their residents. It is reviewed by the Office of State Controller to ensure that school districts do not exceed the tax cap. And finally, it presents a transparent calculation of the tax levy providing the public and school boards with the knowledge they need to make informed decisions. There are some key points to know about the tax cap calculation formula. And you can see them on the board, I'll go over them one by one. Number one, the tax-based growth factor. That is determined by the New York State Department of Taxation. That actually increases your tax-based calculation. This year, as you can see, it is 1.0063. Last year, when the other school business official was here, Lindsay, it was 1.0105. I'm not saying I brought doom and gloom, but that's just what happened. Number two, pilots. Pilots are designed to entice businesses to the area by providing a tax levy discount. The next item is the allowable growth factor, which is right there on the screen, .02. That is your actual tax cap. That is calculated by the Office of State Controller. They determine that number and that's what's locked in. Item number four, highlighted in yellow, is the capital tax levy for the current year. It's also down at the bottom for the proposed levy for the current year for the net of reserves. Simply put, folks, that is your building aid, your buses, and your boats' debt service that we have to pay excluding our state aid. So something that you should know, once again, that number is excluding our state aid to the state aid that we get. This is the five-year historical trend. As you can see in yellow, if anybody has ever looked at the budget book or cared to look at the financials, that yellow number is this year's tax levy base. It's a little hard to see maybe on the far side of the room. Thirty-three million, oh three nine seven, two fifty-four. So let's review the formula. Let's take a deep breath. Start at the top. It starts with the number that is our tax-based levy, thirty-three million, oh three nine, two five four. We multiply that by the estimate of the tax-based growth factor, which I said increases your tax base. As you can see, that raises it to thirty-three, two forty-seven, four oh one. We add back in twenty-four, twenty-five pilot payments, which is fifty-two thousand, six fifty-nine, increasing your base again. We exclude the twenty-four, twenty-five debt service, otherwise what I said before, the building, the buses, and BOSI's debt service that we have to pay excluding state aid to come up with your new taxable levy base. We multiply that by the Office of State Controller's 2% and we end up with our new base of thirty-two million, one seventy-nine, four seventy-six. We deduct from there, and this is just what I do on a daily basis, we deduct from there sixty-eight thousand, six eighty-four, which represents twenty-five, twenty-six pilot payments that will be occurring coming up. You'll notice that it increased from the fifty-two to the sixty-eight. That means basically we're gonna have more pilot payments as they go out in years. Finally, we add back in that whopping one million, seven ninety-three, one ninety-four, which is the twenty-five, twenty-six debt service payment excluding building aid. That's what we say. Once you put all those numbers together, that gives us our new number of thirty-three million, nine oh three, nine eighty-six, a 2.62 increase from last year or a whopping eight sixty-four, seven thirty-two. Now, I just want to point out, previously when I mentioned that the multiplier, the growth base factor, multiplied with 1.0063 at the top, if we had used last year's number, if everything had stayed flat, we probably would've received another hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Once again, this is those numbers that changed. These are the numbers that we do not have control over that impacts our tax levy calculation. Last but not least, these numbers have been vetted by Bernard Donigan. We've gone over them one by one. I've double-checked them, crossed them under my i's and crossed my t's. And that is our tax levy calculation that has to be sent to the Office of State Controller by March 1st. So this will be on note. If there are any questions, I will move on.
You say capital, local debt, and lease expenditures. That lease, that's the BOSI's lease?
BOSI's lease is included.
That's included this year.
This is this year.
Sort of that lease through I park eighty. Do we know if we are occupying I park eighty-seven this September?
I don't think that was in the plan.
I don't.
So we're paying the first...
I think we actually are.
Paying the first year lease on that now even though we're not occupying in September? We're not occupying in twenty-five, twenty-six?
Well, I think we should be occupying in twenty-five, twenty-six.
They've been over instruction all year?
Right. But this is giving that debt service that you're gonna pay.
For this year.
And do we have a term for that lease? Did they get in a fixed rate increase? Or we not know that?
The details of that, off the top of my head, I can get it for you, but I... No, I mean, he's got the information that he needs to come up with our number, but all of the details about that lease, I don't have it off the top of my head.
So, let's move on to our state aid. The foundation aid is increasing due to several factors, including the consumer price index, CPI, your student needs, the regional cost index, and the census data. It should be noted that the census data originally, what the state was using was the census data from 2000. And that was hurting a lot of districts. And now they've brought it up to a reasonable number that's closer to this year. Some expense-based aid categories are experiencing reductions due to various factors such as changes in, and this is a hard word to say out loud, ARWADA, which is your resident weighted average daily attendance. You can say that three times. And the evaluations by the Office of State Controller. The definitions and explanations for these state aids can be found at his website. If you want to go there, feel free to. If you can't sleep at night, that will definitely help you sleep. We'll talk about the executive state aid and we'll start off with foundation aid. Foundation aid increased three-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand, five eighty-four. It should be noted that the foundation aid now, if we still are held at home harmless or homeless, that will be our new starting base. BOSI's increased, one-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand. Hardware and technology increased, twenty thousand. Software and library books increased, twenty-four thousand. As I mentioned before, there are some expense-based aids that declined. As you can see, high cost slash excess cost, private excess cost, and the biggest one there is the transportation cost went down by a hundred and fifty-two thousand. I have been, and my staff have been helping me looking at what are the factors that are contributing to this loss? For example, on the transportation side, that infamous word, ARWADA, decreased. That's your resident weighted average daily attendance and the Office of State evaluation increased. So simply put, you've got less students sitting in the seats and the state decided that you have more evaluation here in Highland and other school districts, so they're not gonna fund you as much. And these are the calculations inside the formula. So it's not always about expenses. It's about how the state adds things into the formula that will throw your numbers off.
But isn't ARWADA, it's a composite of all the county's kids at BOSI's?
It's a combination of things, yes. But for our Highland, ARWADA went down by itself. So you have your ARWADA for everybody.
Because of our enrollment going down?
Yeah. Each one of us has our own individual ARWADA.
ARWADA.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we went down individually because we did have a decline in enrollment and that does hurt us.
Do we have an idea of BOSI's enrollment is increasing or decreasing? I would imagine it's increasing because they're trying to open up these new facilities.
I think ours is... Ours has remained pretty consistent and we're actually, I think, increasing slightly.
The number of students we send there. I got you. Thank you.
So, in regards to building aid, the building aid number will increase once we have made some of the submissions for the SA 139, final cost reports, and the certificates of substantial completion, I'm glad I could say that, for phase one. I know that the superintendent has signed off on some of those items. Those will change that number and will get increase in building aid for the things that we've been, the projects we've been working on. So that number will change going forward. The high cost stays the same and in high cost and excess cost, we're looking to see if it's stacking or if it has to be an increase in the local share. So that's been my project this week to try and find out what are the items that are kind of drivers that are making those increase. We then move on to, we take those numbers from the state and we add them to our revenue that we have. We've kept our federal Medicaid revenue flat. I don't see that increasing. Payments in lieu of taxes for twenty-five, twenty-six will go up slightly by sixteen thousand. Our other revenue sources are made up of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand in interest, four-hundred thousand dollars in BOSI surplus, fifty thousand dollars in prior year, and a new revenue source that we've tried to start, twenty thousand, which we call fuel oil reimbursement. Once we have that, we've kept the interfund transfers flat for now. I know there has been some questions in the past about using some of the fund balance and using some of our reserves, but as we look at our expenses, we may have to come back and look at that number. We added in the fund balance that was approved plus the tax levy to come to our new estimated first round of revenue of fifty-five million, four twenty-five, five five two. Questions?
Curious, going back to BOSI's, that was roughly, what, an eight percent increase? We're looking in the fiscal year. Is that typical or is it just because of the new property? That's typical, eight percent year over year?
I think that it's not as... I think it's higher than it has been. It's a concern the superintendents have brought.
I'm just, yeah, because I was looking at, you know, the amount we're receiving from the state is significantly... The percentage is much smaller than an eight percent increase we're going year over year with BOSI's. I'm just curious to know how that's tracking.
One thing that we have to be careful with is, and I think in my first few years, we started to look at some of the things we were purchasing through BOSI's. And one of the downsides of that is if you don't purchase, then you're not getting a reimbursement.
Right, expense-driven aid.
You need to make sure that if you can buy it through BOSI's, buy it through BOSI's because you're gonna get a return in the following year. But when we were going through that struggle, we were chopping things out of that so that we could make that bottom number make sense for that year. So, we haven't added anything back in, but we need to start looking at getting back into that reimbursement cycle. I mean, everything's a different percentage. So, you know, if it was the cost of the school tool management system, that might've gone up. I'm gonna make these numbers up because I don't have them in front of me. You know, that might've gone up three percent. Something else might've gone down two percent. Something else might've gone up sixteen percent. So it's hard to say. It just depends on what the category is.
I'm just curious what the offset of the reimbursement does to that number.
Yeah.
We have, I have looked at line by line in terms of BOSI's categories to look at what's the plus and minuses in terms of what the superintendent said, what's going up, what's going down. And they fluctuate depending upon the services provided. I can, when I finish the analysis, I can gladly share that with you if you like. So you can just see overall what the increases are. And they just range all over the place.
Is that transportation aid expense-driven as well?
Yes.
So a loss in that category might make sense if you're buying propane buses. I mean, aren't they supposed to have a lower maintenance point? They break down less, you're not maintaining them. So there is some potential there that efficiency increases. Expenses might decrease, no?
You do have some, that is true. You do have expenses, transportation, one of the expense-driven aids. In the situation that, when I looked into it, we have higher expenditures. We do have more mileage for the year that we supported it.
I see.
However, when you have those other variables impacting your calculation, like I said in the tax levy, if you have a smaller tax levy ratio that you're multiplying it by, that's gonna give you a lower number. So even though we have higher expenses, the other factors that are coming in from the state and the other factors in terms of the ARWADA drove your reimbursement down. And this is not normal to any of the school districts that I've seen. It's just that it hit Highland a little heavier than I thought. So once again, we're looking into what we can do to make sure that does not happen for go forward.
Start with giving our local politicians an earful. We'll talk about that.
That's a whole new story.
I do.
Desmond?
Yeah, I know.
On the previous slide, the, um, executive state aid, I know you had said the one, uh, building aid may change. Are we confident in the rest of the numbers, or is there potential for them to change as well?
There's a potential for the other numbers to change. I'm very confident in the building aid. I've been working with Bernard Donigan. We're looking at when the submissions of the phase one items are being sent in, will that drive another million dollars perhaps to that line? And that's possible, but it also then has the opposite side effect. We have to have a look at the debt service that we're going to pay for those projects. So it, it could balance itself out. In terms of the excess costs and high cost, I think those are areas that we can look into that can have a change in those numbers, but transportation is one that's just a little bit, uh, difficult right now to kind of move the needle on.
And the foundation aid is expected to be there? That's approved?
Yes, it's approved. That foundation aid is not going to change.
Okay.
You'll wake up tomorrow, it'll still be the thirteen million oh four oh seven nine nine.
Some of the high cost too is if we bring back students from out-of-district placements, or, or if they graduated, or if they went to a BOSI's rather than a private, so that can affect some of those.
And those are all fluctuating items, and we're looking into that, what's causing that driver.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, um, we'll move on. We'll get to the end of the presentation. The proposed bus referendum. We have two sixty-five propane buses that we are looking to purchase and a Ford F-one-fifty pickup truck with a plow. Pete Miller tells me that's for me to do extra work, but I'll work on that. And then finally, we have our calendar, which as you can see, January twenty-first, the governor released her executive budget. February's meeting is today. March first is the required due date that we have to send the tax levy calculation to the Office of State Controller. As I said before, it has been reviewed by Bernard Donigan. So I'm very confident in that number. And then March eighteenth, we'll have our next board meeting, where we'll go over the adjusted revenue, and we'll start to look at the expense side. And finally.
Our next meeting is actually the fourth.
Fourth?
That's the second.
That's the second one. I apologize. That's my one correction. Um, and then there is, it's March fourth on there. I took the budget workshop below that. This is our calendar. It's on our website. It has all of our dates, which was approved by the board in terms of what we are planning on doing. So if you want me to send this to you again, we can. I'll make that adjustment for the fourth. And if there are no questions, I will now go back quietly.
Desmond, on the bus proposition, um, I know we have to approve that prior to we have to approve in our budget because that has to be in one year. We, we missed that date.
Yes.
We lost it. But with the governor's proposal for districts to not be able to buy fossil fuel buses after twenty-twenty-seven and have to be all-electric by twenty-thirty-five, I believe those are the dates. Wouldn't it be beneficial to us? I mean, if it falls, follows through, this and one more year is going to be the last year we're going to be able to buy fossil fuel buses.
I think this, and I think next, the next year, we'd have to really evaluate, do we need that extra, those extra buses? We'd have to look.
That's, that's what I'm getting at.
We're looking at the inventory that we have, how old the older buses are, and how long they can stay on the road, and what type of maintenance we need on them. But you really have to look at that. That's number one. Number two, do we really believe that this is going to come to fruition?
No.
There's a new.
Probably not, but we have to plan.
Administration who may or may not, and I'm going to leave it at that, like, we're not going to go there, um, who may change that idea. So I think school districts are right now holding the line with the buses that they're purchasing and then determining where do we go from there. So I think Highland has to do the same thing. We'll go with these two purchases. And once again, if we can get that reimbursement for fuel oil back as an additional cost in there, then this is more money.
Talk to Arlington, talk to Wapengers. If they're not buying e-buses, why should little old Highland? That's my philosophy on that.
It's not just buying the buses. It's also the infrastructure, the chapter bills, and everything else around it, and we have not.
We need our own electrical grid.
We don't want to be the first ones to do it. We'd love to see what everybody else does and how it works out.
What do we, Mr. Miller, Kathy, what do we currently have as reserve buses? Do we have reserve buses? If, if some break down, we do have reserve buses?
Yes.
But they're aged buses.
No, not necessarily. Our fleet is, we got a few, two buses that are, uh, heading into the ten-plus years. Okay, not too many. A couple of them are diesels, right? Um, the buses that we're putting in for this year are basically replacements for them for long-trip buses. They'll do gasoline. It will not be diesel. They will not be propane, um, so that we can take longer trips without having to worry about being able to get fuel. Um, so we're looking at it that way. Um, we were advised to continue to buy fossil fuel buses. We've also ramped it up a little bit so we have extra buses. So if buses do pass away, that we have enough buses to continue to move forward. So, um, that's been our goal. That's where we are. We don't have the power grid. We don't have the infrastructure.
So you, you're confident right now that possibility that we only have two years left of buying the fossil fuel buses, that what we're proposing, only two right now, sixty-five passengers, no handicaps, no smaller suburb, we're, we're going to be okay?
I think next year, we're going to have to look at that seriously as the last year in a window, what we're going to do and where it's going to go from that point.
But I guess.
Have we looked at this year?
Mike, that's my concern. If we're going to burden the taxpayers next year with seven buses and only.
And maybe not get approval for it.
And not get approval for it.
Do you want us to now take a step back and look to see where we are with our buses and determine if we should add other buses to this proposal?
I think it's based, I think it's based, like, where you're going, it's based on dollars spent in this budget year. That's where you're going, correct?
Well, the proposition, the referendum, the proposition is a, is a taxpayer-approved. So, I mean,
What is the percentage?
Just like Heather said, if we have to hit them with, throw a number out there, you know, seven buses, one point two million, what if they defeat that? Then we're.
Well, I thought we had a schedule. We were following the schedule. There's X number of units.
We are, Mike, but, but with, and I know you're saying it's not going to happen, but if it does happen.
Actually, let's back up. There's, um, you know, I don't know what the transportation conversations are, Al, and I don't know if anybody in this room does. But maybe it's time to talk with a consultant and see what they would advise on what, what's going on in New York and make a recommendation. I don't want to put it all on Pete. I don't want to put it all on me.
I can tell you from the last Oxford meeting, uh, electric buses was one of the items that I brought up to the legislators that were there, and I got a pretty strong sense from, I think his name is, uh, Assemblyman Mayer or Mahar, that there were going to be changes coming down about that, that, that schedule. Nobody will, nobody will give you, um, a definitive yet, but it sure sounded like it. And even, uh, Assemblyman Jacobson was, uh, was not necessarily in agreement with it, but understanding of what districts were saying. So one of the points that I brought up was in the Hyde Park Central School District in the fall, they had a grant for, I don't know the exact number, but it was in the teens number of buses that, uh, they could get approved. Um, it was a grant for electric buses, but they needed voter approval because they needed other things to go with them, and that got voted down. And so my question to the assemblyman and the senators, or the senator that was there, uh, what happens if the community votes down our buses? How do we transport if this mandate stays in place? And so I think they listened. I think they're taking it back to the state. Where that's going to land, I think we're going to hear more about it during this budget season.
I think the problem is Al's right. If, if the deadline doesn't get moved, we're two budget seasons away.
Correct.
We're in one of them. I hear what you're saying.
Just take that back and review it. Maybe there's a possibility you want to add another additional bus or something. Just, you don't know where it's going to land.
We can take it back. We can take a look to see where we stand, and we can.
I mean, it's early on in discussion.
It's early on. It's early enough to say, yes.
Yeah, I mean, we got hit with a bubble once before, and that was difficult, and that's why we talked about developing the schedule to smooth these purchases out. So you're, boy.
Yeah, which they're following.
Do we have, do we have a schedule? Because I know I had asked, I believe it was last year or before that.
I think it was, it was actually a financial, uh, schedule that was created by Bernie, Bernie Donigan. It was based on debt and debt falling off.
Yes.
And, and what, what was going to create what our bus purchases was going to be. We kind of ran off the end of that. So we're kind of in limbo a little bit as to where we're going because everybody's up against the twenty-twenty-seven ruling. And everybody's being a little bit cautious, except that nobody's got enough power. Nobody's got enough money for infrastructure, and the taxpayers don't have enough money for electric buses. So, um, we're kind of like, I think, I kind of, where we are right now in this conversation is kind of where I thought we were going to be while we were putting this together. So.
I guess my concern is if we do have that schedule, like Mike had alluded to, we did at one point have a bubble. Where is that bubble going to hit us, right? Or have we smoothed it out enough? Because if that bubble's going to hit us next year, and then we're also looking at what this potentially could mean, I think we got to consider that this year to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in bad.
We could go back.
We're pretty.
Excuse me. I was just going to say, it was like two or three years ago, whatever the budget presentation was, the schedule was right on, and we just got to carry it forward with new purchases. Shouldn't be difficult. I think what Heather's saying is it shouldn't be difficult to update.
Right, and I, I know when I asked last year or the year before, I was told that the schedule had ran out, and they were looking to refresh it, and I don't, I haven't seen anything, and I don't need to see anything as long as I have confidence that that schedule is there and exists, and you're comfortable with, if there is a bubble, that we're good with where we are.
Well, I think the discussions were on guidance to get it to the, to that point that we were doing the right thing at that point in time, not that there's anything, I think at this point that is factual to that it's one bus, two buses, three buses, whatever. I think it's got to be, uh, analyzed as to where we want to go and how far we want to get into. Uh, because the other, the other end of the twenty-twenty-seven issue is twenty-thirty-seven when you can't run that.
Correct.
Okay, so we got to look at that.
Yep. So I guess, when does this, this bus referendum have to be?
It's on the slide.
Forty-five days before.
I think it's forty-five days.
Forty-five days before the referendum.
So I guess I would just encourage, just take one more look to make sure that.
We probably got to the meeting, first meeting in April to have that truth.
So what we can do is kind of, there's a couple of things I'm hearing. One, um, go back and look at that schedule that actually existed. It showed the trajectory of when we're going to have the buses, kind of meet that bubble and not get to that point. Number two, look at what we want to do going forward. Um, look at the maintenance of our current buses, where do we stand? And if we do want to create a new list or a new schedule, here's what we will do, and keep that in mind that we know eventually it will fall off when we have to do electric buses. So we can pull this, we can pull back and kind of make some more suggestions in the next meeting for February, or in March, you know, fourth, which we can do that, or get it to the board ahead of time. But that's what I hear is a goal that we want to do. And if you agree, that'd be great. If you disagree, then please let me know.
Desmond, in regards to the, uh, the e-buses, what, uh, how much is in that reserve fund we have established?
I don't recall establishing a reserve.
E-buses?
No, the electric buses, I thought we had.
We have one overall for.
We've got.
Yeah, no, I thought there was a.
No, we've got, with capital reserves, we've got other reserves that we have, but I do not see that there was one approved by the board for electric buses.
Are there state support purchases of the buses? What percentage do we get?
I'm not sure about that. Um, I know we are probably.
They were going something.
Transportation.
I mean, it doesn't, this goes up as a separate referendum, so we don't have to worry about that. I'm anticipating the prices will most likely increase if these steel tanks.
So, yeah, all a bit of that is fact. Any other questions or comments?
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, we have our consent items. FA one to six point, uh, C point six with, uh, an addendum. That's added on as going under personnel, uh, appointments, five probationary, that'll be added. So like you normally do, if you have, uh, any consent item that you want to pull, have a separate discussion, separate vote. If you do that, you need anything clarified, just shout it out.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion by Mike, second by Heather. Everybody okay? Good the way it sits? All right, we have a motion on the floor to accept our consent agenda with, uh, the addendum under personnel.
Absolutely.
Motion by Mike, second by Heather. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any objections? So carry.
Okay, so, so this evening, uh, we do have a couple of our newly appointed, uh, employees in the room that I'd like to recognize. We have Alyssa DeWitt, uh, in the back there. She will be our STEAM teacher, starting at the high school to replace Mr. Anaisoni. Uh, we also have Julia Saphone sitting there in the back. She'll be teaching at the middle school as a leave replacement, replacing, uh, Mr. Savelson, and our new high school assistant principal, Ms. Colleen Mullins. So congratulations and welcome.
Congratulations for. Okay. Moving on to our principals report. So we'll start off with the elementary school.
Ready to jump up? Good evening, guys. Just a few quick additions to my principals' report, uh, that didn't quite make it because submit things. Uh, Friday, the interact club from the high school came down. We had a tremendous amount of interact kids that came down um, and made Valentine's cards for our veterans, part of Pat Ryan's, um, program. So this is the third year we're participating in that. Um, and we had well over two hundred, uh, cards made the other day, so, um, and they got sent over to, uh, my office. And, you know, I just want to give a huge shout out to, uh, Amelia DePorno, because she did a phenomenal job organizing, getting everyone scheduled. Um, it, it flowed really well, so hats off to her. She did a phenomenal job. And the only other thing was, this is big news also, this is really awesome, is that we have currently fifty packets out for kindergarten, so, which is a good number at this time of the year. That's, that's a good number.
Any questions for Andy?
Thank you very much. Andy?
All right. Uh, just two quick additions. The first one, um, was last Friday, uh, the seventh, we did a wear red for, um, heart, uh.
Heart health awareness.
Yes, thank you. Heart health, heart health awareness month. So one of our teachers, actually, Ms. Ivins, helped organize that, um, for the staff and students. So although we had a snow day the day before, which is usually when we push that out, uh, we still had really a lot of some people who participated and wore red. Second time during the month where we wore red, which was cool. Um, so that was, that was great. So thank, thank you, Ms. Ivins, for really pushing that, and the students that participated. The other one was, um, Dr. Harris, who last year was on a sabbatical of sorts, uh, in South America, uh, presented to our staff during the three, uh, staff lunch periods in our conference room, kind of some different things that she did uh, during her year in Ecuador. So that was really cool. We all got to, she made food for us. Um, she had a slideshow that kept running of all the pictures of things she did, and she was there to kind of answer questions and talk to staff about, um, the, the, the work that she did when she was there. Um, so she's done that with students in different ways to, to her students, but it was really cool for us as staff to see kind of what she did during her year, um, Dr. Harris. So, um, so yeah, that, that was my addition to
Any questions? Thank you, Andy.
You're very welcome.
Good evening, everybody. I do have three brief additions. Uh, the first one I'll share with you. Last week, we had FBI, uh, intel analyst, uh, working with our new health and visit teacher, Noelle Randolph. Um, her name was Odessa Sims. Uh, she came in to speak about internet safety, digital footprint, um, digital literacy, and things of that nature. She is currently, um, you know, so active with the FBI. So we were happy to have that partnership. Uh, students across the A and B days were able to, um, you know, meet with her, ask questions, and learn a little bit more about, um, you know, digital, uh, awareness and safety. Uh, additionally, today we had Deputy Tui here with the Tulsa County Sheriff's Office, uh, who brought in K-nine Cody, who Mr. Freer had the chance to meet today. Uh, Cody is a therapy dog, and today we kind of collaborated with our Taste of Success program and our student capstone projects with Miss Saylor's class. Uh, so our senior Lauren Santiago, um, set up the connection, and we brought, um, you know, her in to present to our students. And it was a good, uh, it was a good day, and, um, you know, Lauren is going to be talking more about it at the Civic Showcase, uh, in April. And then lastly, just before I came into the meeting, I have one late addition. Uh, Mr. Tatum has mentioned to me that he just received word that Cam Adoma, uh, just got a piece. uh, just got a piece of writing from his last year's college comp one class. Uh, just got published in New Pults's New Voices, New Vision Student Work Anthology.
Awesome.
So we're happy to hear that. And additionally, uh, Cam will be taking part in our staff PD development, uh, where he'll be presenting a workshop alongside some other teachers, uh, this Friday for professional development. Does the board have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have, uh, our directors here this evening. Again, I'm going to ask the question. Anybody have any questions for our directors? For the fifth month in a row, they're doing an excellent job. Thank you.
I did tell Mr. Fisher, great website. I really like the new look and feel of the new website. You know, there's a lot of work behind that. So, uh, that looked good, but so does the completed, um, stand outside. Just came together nice. Mr. Freer showed us some pictures of the husky that was put on there from front facing because we see the side from the parking lot. But it's really coming along back there. So, yeah, looks good.
Good, thank you. Okay, uh, our students have.
So the elementary school, sorry, can you pass this down? Has increased participation in the Be a Friend project, which is a letter writing campaign to support kids being bullied. Um, the Be a Friend project builds empathy in communities and offers peer support to students across the country, which stops bullying before it starts. Um, participation has increased to twelve classrooms, one related service provider and a Highland Girl Scout troop. There are nearly two hundred letters, pictures and cards of support for this month's recipient, Kayla. Kayla, Talaya, I'm sorry, I was pronouncing your name. Um, in the middle school, Spirit Week is taking place this week, highlighting all the things that our best students and staff. Themes include school spirit, being cozy, sports scenes, friendship and Nicole's red and pink for Valentine's Day. Everyone is excited to represent their favorite things from their school days. Um, sixth grader Chi Fei Wang was selected by the Ulster Prevention Council as a winner of the twenty twenty four Youth Media Contest in the foreign language category. The youth media contest and just an art competition. Students created their own original pieces that either highlighted the negative effects of vaping, marijuana and/or alcohol on the teenage brain, or provided examples of healthy alternatives to substance abuse. Chi Fei was, was chosen out of many other entries that identify the obsessive talent of the middle school. Um, the Highland Middle School Snowball Dance will take place on Friday, February twenty first at six P M. The dance will be hosted by the middle school PTA and the students are very excited to show up and show out for this wonderful dance. The last dance was a huge success and we have to continue this kind of body day. And at the high school, two weeks ago on Saturday, February first, the Science Olympiad Club went to a tournament at John Day High School. STEM teachers, Mr. Moore and Mr. Anaisoni helped the club medal, winning eighth place out of thirty-six teams that attended. The students in the categories air trajectory won sixth, helicopter won fifth and ecology won second. Um, this Friday, the high school's band and chorus are playing a Black History Month concert. The theme is Summer of Soul, Harlem in nineteen sixty-nine. Guest singer Rhonda Dumeys coming up from the city to perform with the music department. The jazz and percussion ensemble will be performing and the choir will be singing the song Stand Up from the movie Harriet. Also on Friday, after the concert is the Dinoa Cultura Celebration where my students Emily, Albijon and Kelly Flores for the CIA project. It will be a pep rally with Latin beam games and prizes. The cafeteria will be serving a special breakfast, including orange juice, churros, cornbread, hot chocolate and mango yogurt. It will be a big celebration of the senior culture. Um, Mrs. Otis, the Spanish teacher did Valentine's for veterans after school on January twenty seventh, which is already mentioned. Um, oh no, sorry, not, this one wasn't already mentioned, with the sophomores, including Afriin Acker, Gavin Decker, Nicklin Nielsen, Susan Slidovich and Pace Booklow. These students designed and created cards for veterans in Hudson Valley. And last Friday, continuing the trend, Mrs. Pacasi's Interact Club visited the elementary school to make more cards with the kids. The kind messages and drawings from the students will help brighten the day for the heroes in our community.
Any questions?
I don't have a question. I just want to punctuate a comment about the Be a Friend project. I've had the pleasure of being personally involved and I just wanted to say out loud and go on record what a beautiful project it is. And I've been so happy to have been able to help with it as well. So I'm glad it was brought up. Um, it's a really wonderful project. So I just wanted to punctuate that note.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on, um, Assistant Sue for correcting instructions, you're not here. And Human Resources and Pupil Personnel, Dr. Boyd.
Hi, everybody. Um, so each year, uh, before annual review meetings, I meet with all the teachers and review their recommendations and talk about our programs, uh, which also helps us plan for, uh, for next year. Uh, so on Friday, I met with all of our middle school teachers. Today I met with all of our elementary and on Thursday I'll be meeting with all of our high school teachers, uh, which will cover us across the district as we plan for next year. Um, we have an education stabilization fund monitoring report that we have to do. Uh, so we did one last year, uh, and this year we have to go back and look at all of our grant spending that we did, um, during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Uh, and it's a lot of information, uh, working with Desmond's office, uh, to collect that and put that into different categories on how we spent some of that money. Uh, so we'll, we'll be working on that, uh, and we'll be submitting that by the end of the month. Um, I think I mentioned earlier in the fall, Ulster County set up a traumatic event team. Um, so across all the component districts, uh, we have individuals, um, that are part of the team that if there ever is a tragedy at a school district, um, these are team members that we might send, uh, if needed or will support. So, uh, we, we've been meeting monthly on Zoom. I just want to highlight, um, Lisa Neer and Emily Barker, uh, from our district who came forward to volunteer, uh, to be part of that team. So, uh, we have another meeting this Thursday and again, we just find ways, uh, to help, um, in a productive way, um, when these situations come up. Uh, we hope we never have to utilize this team, obviously, uh, but we want to make sure that, um, we're there to support each other, um, if it does come about. Uh, and lastly, uh, we, there is a Hudson Valley Educators Consortium. Uh, last Saturday I participated in that. There was a workshop held at Marist College. They invite all.
Marist University.
Marist University, excuse me. Yes. It says, if you went there, yeah, I know, I better get that right. I know. Uh, held in their new building, which is absolutely beautiful. Um, but it's all, um, all new, uh, there are soon to be teachers, uh, teachers in training from, um, Marist, Bard, New Paltz, Mount St. Mary's, Albany, everybody across the board, uh, comes to this. Um, so I was on two different panels. One was for, uh, some new teachers of their first few years and another one was actually for, um, aspiring administrators. Uh, so it was a great experience to get to meet some of those, uh, new folks coming up, um, and share some stories with them and get to know them as well. Shout out to, um, the folks who run that, um, really helping support those new teachers, uh, with that endeavor.
Any questions for Dr. Boyd? Okay, Superintendent.
Okay, so this coming Friday, uh, we have a half-day professional development. We have students in the morning and we have, uh, professional development scheduled in all three of our buildings in the afternoon. Um, no school this coming Monday for President's Day. And believe it or not, we are already up to winter parent-teacher conferences. So I know those messages are going out to families now to get them to sign up for conferences. But on February twenty-seventh, the high school will host from five to eight. On March third, the middle school from five to eight. And on, uh, March sixth, the elementary school. And then on March seventh, we will have the day conferences in the morning and no students will be in session. So I wanted to just also put on your radar that, uh, we are gearing up already for Music in Our Schools Month, which starts, uh, the beginning of March. And our music teachers have been very, uh, busy getting our students ready for the two scholarship concerts that always turn out to be such great evenings. So please put them on your calendar for March fifth, our instrumental concert. That's the one in, the, uh, the one in the round in the gym. Uh, and then on Wednesday, March twelfth, would be the choral, uh, concert. At the last board meeting, I mentioned that I'd be attending, uh, the Mid-Hudson Catskill Council School Superintendent's in Goshen that following Thursday. So I went there in the morning and then I went to the Ulster County School Boards Association in the afternoon. And the combined between the two, there was quite a bit of information. Uh, one about foundation aid and things of that nature, but I think the highlight for me that day was, I mentioned a little bit ago about a meeting with the legislators, uh, with the school boards association and topics ranged from, uh, from all different superintendents, but I will say that anyone, I think Mike's, uh, district might have told him that I spoke a lot because I feel like this is our only opportunity to get those folks that are going back to Albany to take back our concerns. So, uh, increased aid for pre-K. Uh, we want them to evaluate, uh, the civil service, uh, requirements because it, civil service often, um, stunts us in getting people hired because those tests are not offered very often. We talked about the electric bus mandate. Uh, I made a plug to, uh, have them talk to, uh, the retirement system and we hear uh, fixed tier six. Well, there's a reason why folks aren't going into the profession. One of them is the, 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 the amount of time that they have to work. They have to get to sixty-two and the contributions that they make. So take a hard look at that was one of the things that we mentioned. Um, school lunch funding. So we, right now we're under the, the, the program to have, uh, free meals for all. So I think the governor is on board with that, but hopefully, uh, that doesn't come at the expense of other aspects of our budget. So we asked them to take a look at that. Um, we've heard a lot about the Rockefeller Institute and their study of the foundation aid formulas. And many districts, uh, saw slight increases or at least got the same harmless funds to be in there. But believe it or not, there are twenty-three districts across the state, one of them being Rondow, that saw a major decrease. Kingston also saw a decrease. So, um, I actually spoke up on behalf of Rondow because I don't know that they wanted to be, uh, baking that statement because, but it's, it's not right. I mean, I, I, of course, I want as much money for Highland as possible, but Ulster County kids, these are all our kids. So one district shouldn't get penalized because another district got a little bit more funding. So taking that information back to the state. And then just, uh, other, other unfunded mandates that are coming down the pipe from the state education department through the legislature, um, as something as simple as every student has to fill out a FAFSA form. That sounds great, but that's capital. That's time from our guidance counselors taking away from other things that they need to do. Um, so on the surface, all those things sound wonderful and this Assemblyman Jacobson and I have had this conversation for a few years now. Every time they put another mandate on the school district without providing, um, some additional funding or additional staffing, it takes away from some of the other things that we're doing. And we all know how much we valued mental health here in our district. So taking guidance counselors out of the mix so that they can follow up with students to make sure that they get that, uh, FAFSA form. It, again, truly important work, but it comes at the expense of other things. And then, um, we also asked them to, if the governor's going to do her cell phone policy, please get it out, get it out quickly so that districts have information that, um, we can actually work with and not drag. You know, we heard all last year she was going to come out with something by September and that didn't happen. And I think that held us up in making some decisions here locally. They all said that that is definitely one of their priorities to bring that back. Um, and then just finally, off of all of my politicking in the last two weeks, uh, one of the things that we just finished today was the annual, or the, every other year we have to submit a, a huge, uh, it's a huge report. It's the first time I've ever seen it. It's the Office of Civil Rights out of Washington DC that we have to submit that data. That was a pretty arduous process. It started in the fall. It's due March seventh. Our data was cleaned as of today and I submitted it. So we are good to go with that. I don't know that that data does anything for us. Uh, you know, I don't know that it gets us any more funding, but um, we took a hard look at all of those, uh, those categories and, and tried to give us accurate numbers we possibly could. And that's all that I have.
Any questions? Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, Board of Education, new business. Uh, first reading of our student officer, the school board policy. Uh, anyone want to move that to a second reading? You have an opportunity to go through it when we're ready to move it.
I read it. It seemed pretty straightforward.
All right. Highland Central School District Board of Education Policy Number Two Three Seven Zero, Student Officer of Highland Central School District. Board of Education, be resolved, the Board of Education, upon a recommendation of the superintendent, approve the attached Highland Central School District Board of Education Policy Number Two Three Seven Zero. Student Officer of the Highland Central School District Board of Education, as presented to the board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Ed, second by Janine. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? So carry. Okay, BOC's Annual Meeting.
Ms. Roper has her own policy now, is that?
She does.
Is that a mantra? Standing.
You know, I thought we had a policy, but we've just had a standing practice for all these years.
We told, we, we talked about this once before, but I don't think we.
We were ahead of, we were ahead of the curve on that. And then when they came out that, uh, the governor approved it last year, the, we needed to have a policy in place by July first. So thank you for doing that so that we're ahead of game on getting that done.
Okay, BOC's Annual Meeting and BOC's Vote. BOC's Annual Meeting is scheduled for Thursday, August tenth, uh, August, April tenth, six P M.
Do what I do.
Those are some warm thoughts.
April's not bad, though. Uh, the BOC's County White Vote is scheduled for Tuesday, April twenty-second. And nominations from component districts for vacancies are due to BOC's Board Clerk by March twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. And BOC's Board seat vacancy. Lisa, can you fill us in on that a little bit? We got.
There is.
Our district is not up, I think.
Right. So if you want to make any nominations for New Paltz, Roundup Valley, um.
We could do that, right. That's what will be on our March twenty-first meeting.
What do you mean, like, we can?
I guess we can nominate for somebody.
If you want.
Take those seats if they don't get filled?
Sometimes it means district usually in the past.
Is there any at-large seats open right now?
There's two at-large seats, yes. So like in the past, Highland, in which we nominated Sue Gilmore.
Right, but we.
We can nominate for the at-large seats.
Yes. Anybody interested here?
So we should do that on the March fourth meeting?
March fourth, yes.
Tom, you look good up there.
I will say that they feed the oil.
Okay, uh, full business. Review of Board of Education Mission Statement and District Goals. I know we've been talking about this, uh, and I know Jennifer put out something at our last meeting. I had passed around, you know, my thoughts that we've talked about the last two meetings.
I saw revisions too, after the last board meeting.
Yeah, and I mean, it's probably something we want to finalize and then be able to put it out over the summer on our website for, you know, the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So give it some more thought. Uh, if you want, I can send out, back out what I sent around the last meeting, some things that I put together and I kind of read them two meetings ago. But let's develop a revised mission statement and our board, uh, board goals and our district goals. All right, and we'll kind of develop that and finalize it.
Adopt it right away over the summer.
Let it hit for, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Okay, um, the last item under all business is our second reading for the student use of personal technology. You know, we had a little glitch at the last meeting.
Totally my fault.
We don't, we don't blame anybody.
I, I take full credit for making that mistake. So for the, for the, for the folks that are watching, when I saved the draft, I unfortunately did not save over top of the other draft and sent the board, unfortunately, the wrong thing at the last meeting. So I take complete blame for that. So the new policy as.
Yeah, it's the new policy, but it's one that was out there, uh, a month ago.
It looks great, right?
I have copies if anyone needs copies.
Right. Now I know there was, you know, initial public comment, uh, earlier on regarding, um, us to put a little pause on developing this policy, but I think, this is my opinion, uh, we've been working on this for well over a year. And I, I, I think ours doesn't have, it's not the teeth that if the governor follows through where she's talking about bell to bell. Ours is strictly in the classroom. Electronic devices or personal electronic devices can be used during study hall, during lunch period, in the hallway, blah, 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 blah. I, I think it would be good.
It's graduated. Right. So elementary is a little, is the strict. So elementary is a little, it's the strictest, middle school, still strict, and then the high school, we're allowed.
Yeah, I think middle school, we're pretty much status quo with them. They haven't, we haven't changed it in middle school. It's been like that for a while. I think it's it's good to implement it now. It'll give our high school administrative team, you know, some time to move it through. If the governor does come back and say, hey, it's bell to bell, at least the students have a couple, three, four months of this under their belt.
Yeah, let me clarify that, bell to bell, because it is restrictive. However, I believe the terminology on the governor's proposal says unsanctioned use. There's no unsanctioned use in between those periods. But I believe a local school board is a sanctioning body, and I expect that our policy will hold even up to the governor's. So I, there's some key terminology there that I think, because I don't think around the table we ever talked about, no use bell to bell. So very restrictive. So I think there's some leeway. By adopting this now, they will have sanctioned use during the day.
Well, even, there's no, if we adopt this now, there's nothing to say we can't come back and revisit it.
Sure, of course.
And if we want to fall, if there is a more strict policy that comes about, we can we can discuss that. But I think you're right, this is a great transitionary moment, and I'd love to hear what NICE has to say as well. But that can come back to us with that. But just because if we adopt this today, there's nothing to keep us from changing it down the line. We just have to discuss it and meet again, so.
There was something that we talked about helping administration operationalize this a little bit, and it was a penalty schedule that we had talked about. Now, that would be in an admin regulation, so we don't need it this evening. But I still stand, unless you feel differently, Tom, but I still stand that part of the difficulty at the high school was the enforcement. Whatever the rules were, is the enforcement. And therefore, having a penalty table attached to this as an admin reg or, you know, whatever it is, helps us focus. So this way, admin knows what is very clear, the public knows what's clear if these, if students violate the policy.
I mean, this talk is out there. I mean, wherever you turn, you see them talking about, you know, the the time lost during the educational.
Oh, it's overwhelming.
I know you had said ten minutes, but I saw an article not too long ago. It was like nineteen minutes lost during the course of a instructional period.
Well, trust me, I was being conservative. The kids, Kai knows how much time is lost. The kids know.
So we have our second reading. We can approve that this evening. Why don't we just, you would want to implement this March first or whatever that Monday is, first Monday in March would be the third, I believe. What you're feeling as far as implementation of the policy?
Is that doable for the beginning of March?
Is there the table in terms of the progression consequences? Is that in the current policy?
No, there's no consequences in the current policy. I think.
If you'd like to see this, I could set up full lines.
I think initiate the policy and then give you the opportunity when we develop the code of conduct with what the penalties are gonna be.
I think it'll just make it very clear cut, what it is, this is the step-by-step, and it'll streamline, you know, any of the hiccups that we may encounter. And it'll just make it for an even smoother transition.
Any violation will fall under the term of insubordination. We already have.
If we.
Well, yeah, that that was, yeah, if students told several times, it's insubordination.
We don't have to wait for the summer. If you want to put that table into the current code of conduct, bring it back to the board, we'll approve. This has gotta have teeth. It's gotta be very clear.
But I also think the students need a transitional period to be able to get acclimated, as well as the staff and the administration in the school to be able to support this.
Yeah, but I think we're giving that that up opportunity. I mean, what Mike is saying is it's gonna take the administrative team, so maybe a month or two to develop what those repercussions are gonna be.
We have a professional.
And then by the time we implement it, you're gonna be May or June. So I think there is this this transition period right now. If we implement this policy March third, and then you then the opportunity to develop the repercussions.
Your job is to pass or not the policy.
We're a policymaking.
As it embeds into the institution, does it take two weeks, two months? Do they come back and say, you know, we need more stuff? That's the ongoing discussion. But policy's policy.
You know, to answer, you know, your question, you know, can we make this happen? Yes, we can definitely make it, you know, happen. There's gonna be some hiccups, you know, it's a transitional period for myself and Colleen, who's jumping on board, but, you know, we're ready to to jump in. The timing isn't the best, but we will make it happen for sure.
Yes, I I I will say that should this policy be passed tonight, there's a reasonable timeframe that we all will need to. I mean, for all I know, the community doesn't like it, and we're in the cafeteria in two weeks, and let's see how it goes. But I don't think that's gonna happen, you know. There's concerns and objections, but I'll tell you what, if the governor's policy comes down, it's more restrictive than what you have in front of you, so.
I guess that's how I look at crawl, walk, run, right?
Yeah, right.
Like, let's start moving. I mean, this is what we've talked about, this is what we've agreed on. If what the governor says is coming down is truly what's coming down, it's only going to make it more restrictive, right? So it gives us time to take take steps.
Everybody wants those twenty minutes of instruction back, every day, in every class.
Just a quick observation, Colleen is probably not gonna come on board until about mid-March, possibly sooner.
So you're on your own. No, I wouldn't be nervous about it, because as Janine mentioned, it's a transitionary period, and its enforcement does fall to you ultimately, right? So the, you can use your empathy and situational awareness to to judge, but at least the policy will be, we'll disseminate the policy and the terms will be set forth. And then you, as the the administrator leading the high school, will be able to to help help guide the students in that transition. And there's a certain amount of leeway in what you.
Lots of judgment calls.
But and that's, you know, the feedback that I've got from other administrators, specifically Beacon, that, you know, whose policy we're mirroring, you know, pretty closely, is that they have that table there, and it's just, it's easy. This is it, this is your second time, this is your third time, and that's what it is every time. And it, you know, from what I've heard, that, you know, that's made it easy. And obviously, when Colleen gets on board, that's something that we'll look at together.
I'll throw this out here, and it's up to the board. March seventeenth, be roughly a month from now, to implement it. Hopefully, Colleen's on board at that point in time.
You wanna take a look, we, because we meet once before that, right?
We meet on March fourth.
You wanna look at perhaps adding on a policy of, you know, the, what we've been talking about.
Code of Conduct update.
Policy.
We can have a discussion. I don't know if we'll implement it on that day, but yeah.
Right, I mean, we, yeah, we can start discussing and share it at that meeting.
All right, we're good. So March seventeenth, we'll have, hopefully have Colleen on board by then.
Who's not coming for St. Patrick's?
So Brandon doesn't have to take the whack.
We're still meeting on St. Patrick's.
I think he's doing all right.
All right.
Just one, one piece of feedback on the wording and the policy. And I am on my personal device because I forgot to print it out, so I'll clarify that. So for the middle school, for the high school, we say that we will permit use during non-instructional periods such as study hall. Thank you. Yes, such as study hall, lunch. And then in the middle school, we say we will not allow it during instructional, which includes, it sounds like it's contradictory. I would just suggest for the middle school, saying it's not allowed during instructional or non-instructional time, because I think that's our intent.
Currently, that's your, pretty much your rule down there, yeah? We're not changing anything.
No, it's not changing anything. It's just, you know.
You just want to change the wording.
In the high school, we say non-instructional time such as study hall, but then in the middle school, we say instructional time, which includes lunch and study hall. So one, we're saying lunch and study hall is instructional, and one, we're saying it's non-instructional. So I think just for the middle school to say that we do not allow it for instructional or non-instructional. You know, people get a little very nitpicky about wording once there's an issue, so.
I like it. It's it, it's all in the details when it comes to this stuff.
Good?
I can make that change.
Okay, our second reading, student use of personal technology. Be resolved, the Board of Education, upon a recommendation of the superintendent, approve the attached Highland Central School District Board of Education Policy Number Seven One Six, student use of personal technology as presented to the board at this meeting. We also want to incorporate that the policy will take effect on March seventeenth.
Outstanding.
Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Tom, seconded by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Any abstentions? So carried. Thank you. Anything for the good and welfare of the district? I'll open the meeting up to public comment for the general item, so if anybody wanna stand up, shout your name out, and go ahead.
Other question, I wanted to follow up on the, has there been any discussion by the board if the Department of Education is closed on the federal level, the possible fiscal implications of that, if that does happen, which they have been saying they're going to do?
I think at that point in time, from what I'm hearing, is it's gonna be pushed down to the state level, and they're gonna make all the calls. So I don't think it's gonna affect us locally at this point in time.
On a financial basis?
I I don't know that we can actually say one way or the other.
I didn't know if there's been any discussion or input comes to.
Things are changing by the day. I don't think we can.
You have to presume legal challenges as well, so I don't think, within this fiscal year, I don't think we're gonna see anything.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Again, I just, I actually have two things, and the first thing is I want to thank you for pushing that back to seventeen, because I believe our meeting with NICE is gonna be way before that. And I want to make it clear, I'm not against the cellphone policy. I get my marching orders from NICE, and if NICE comes in and says it's a bell-to-bell ban, I'm gonna be coming back on the seventeenth saying, this is what, this is what NICE is asking, this is what, you know, I'm gonna ask you guys to do at that point. So thank you for doing that, and also thank you for giving Brandon the time to have his assistant principal there. That's gonna make a big difference in the school when it comes to implementing this policy. When one person doing that would have been a tough ask, and thank you all for seeing that. On a change of note at this point, culmination of of events happened over the past few weeks, maybe about a month, where multiple groups have have come up and approached me. Our sports groups, a lot of our community groups, and also our teachers. And they've they've approached me about the usage of the building and the insurance issues that are going on with the building. I told many of them that I would come and speak at the board meeting and ask, not in a confrontational way, that the board look into the insurance issues that are going on with allowing people usage of the building, allowing events to occur at the building, allowing teachers to host events in the building that are educational, allowing our sports programs that we've worked hard to build up at this point. We have a very strong youth football program, youth baseball program, youth soccer program is growing, youth lacrosse program is doing great, and having their access to the building, and even town events that can happen on school property. And it seems like it's being hindered by our current insurance company asking for more. And I see it at the sports level. What ends up happening is if our sports team will take football, Pop Warner, for example, we'll use a round number, it costs a hundred dollars to sign a child up for football, and to utilize our field, the district is gonna charge them additional monies to have insurance that the district needs them to have. That gets passed on to the parent that's paying for that. I'm not complaining because I think I can afford that, but I'm looking to grow the program, and I have families that may not be able to afford that, that that deters them as they raise that price. So just something to think about as a board, potentially create a subcommittee to look into that, to look into risk assessments. I've been working with Desmond on these issues, and he's been wonderful with it, explaining the intricacies of of insurance to me. And I understand you're between a rock and a hard spot, but, you know, our school is our focal point to our community, that's that's Highland's identity, and all of our groups need access to this, to this facilities, to these facilities. And we gotta make it as easy as possible for them to utilize it. So I I hope that.
So let me, let me understand this correctly. Inside and outside groups are being denied access based upon their insurance, their insurance certificate is not reaching a level that our insurance is required for? Seems to be correct.
In in general terms, yes. We've had, superintendent and myself had some conversation several weeks ago about we're bringing it to the board at a future board meeting, hopefully in the month of March, starting the discussion of how we're going to allow our our community groups, our in-house groups, to utilize all our facilities, which now is going to be our turf field, our concession stand. So we're gonna have that conversation in-house and and start that, kind of develop some type of policy or or rules or regulations with with, also with our business official involved in that. And we'll see where we're at land with insurance. I mean, we're governed by what the insurance company tells us.
So our insurance company has increased our premiums based upon what?
The limits required by the outside groups.
Right.
But it's, I'm sorry, I would think that this is a standard policy or procedure compared to other school districts. I mean, we're not the only school district that has community member sports teams, extracurricular activities, who want to come in and use either their buildings or their grounds. So why, it sounds like from the community members, that I've also heard this from, that it's tougher for some reason to use Highland than it is to use other school districts? So then why is that? Because I would think it would be a standard policy of what needs to happen for that to take place.
Well, it's something we expressed before, that we want the schools to become a hub of the community, and so this seems to fly in the face of it. As far as insurance goes, is there any instrument that they can provide, like waivers that people, I mean, if they, there has to be some kind of instrument they can attach.
Look, that, this is a big topic. It sounded like this was gonna be brought to the board.
We'll we'll bring that forward to the board, to have that discussion and have feedback coming from our business official as far as what the insurance companies are asking, and if there is any waivers that could be.
I I will tell you, this is not unheard of. A district to our south that I'm familiar with actually created a facility use policy, and there's some ratings of inside, outside groups, a schedule was applied. Because once you have these wonderful facilities, people want to use them all the time. And I understand.
Which rightfully so, they pay for them.
It's probably a good time to look at facilities use.
When that is brought to the board, what I would just ask for is, I know, obviously, we're gonna be forward-looking, but I would also just like to understand what has changed. Do we have a different insurance company? Did they change their requirements? Is it something state is is advocating for? Like, what changed? Because I know there has been a significant change.
The quick answer to that is, I believe, all school insurance companies are becoming more strict, and they're requiring larger coverage. We found this last year when we were trying to get the the town Lloyd fireworks on our property. State Education Department has added additional layers of red tape that we had to go through. The the town had to get a much larger insurance policy for them to.
For their July fourth celebration.
Tell allow us to do their July fourth fireworks here. If they, if we didn't, I mean, you can do them. But then the district has taken the liability if, God forbid, something happens.
So we have not changed insurance companies, which is required.
We have not, but I'm.
It's a good time to look at that, so.
When I was at Niskus, this was one of the questions that I brought, because it wasn't just this year, it was last year we were facing some of this as well. And the other, the other major carrier out there is doing some of the same thing.
I just need to jump in on this for a second. So we have query the other school districts, and I will say a third, and a third, and a third. There are a third who are having the same difficulty we are having. There are another third, and I will not mention their names, who just, they work through it and they say, well, we'll let that go. And there are a third who just don't care. There are groups who have individuals, and we looked at their websites, we looked at their their background and said, they're not following through on some of those violations. Number two, the insurance limits that we, that NICE is asking for, some of the entities that are asking to rent the space cannot meet that limit. NICE is saying, does the school district want to absorb that liability? For example, somebody may want to come on premise and do something, and they need umbrella insurance of a million, that's what NICE will ask for. That particular organization has only five hundred thousand dollars. They can go out and get the increase in umbrella policy, but it's gonna cost them. Well, that cost. Well, that cost could be monumental to them for that one event. Why should they do that? And therefore, we get into this tug of war of, well, can you kind of limit what you're looking for? NICE is saying, we need a million because we have the deeper pockets if something should occur. And now we get down to smaller issues. Umbrella, we have auto, we have all these different requirements that NICE is asking us to meet, and those individuals are not meeting all of them. And so, we go through this tug of war back in the finance office and with those entities saying, well, you don't meet this insurance. What we've tried to do to try and make sure the finance division is not the culprit is to send the, um, entities and their insurance broker to talk to NICE and let them hash it out. They're speaking insurance, they're talking liabilities, insurance, they're talking the language they should talk. And if they don't agree, then it was on the insurance level, and then both organizations know, well, we're going to take it or not. But now it's coming back to the district, and NICE is saying, what do you, Highland, want to do? What is your requirement? We're saying you don't have enough insurance for this organization. Do you want them to still be on your property to perform or use your space? That becomes something that the board decision, if you put that in the finance office, it can get subjective. Well, I said yes to this, no to that. Why did you say yes, no to this? There's got to be very clear cut rules as to what we're willing to accept. And we're going to run into some serious problems, because I know that Highland is very into the students and making sure that we participate in all the sports. And I've talked into Mr. Rizzo, we've gone through conversations for different events that have occurred here, and came down to the wire, literally down to days, if not hours, to make certain events come through. So, more and more staff, more and more organizations are trying to rent the space. And even today, I have one organization, we say, you do not meet that requirement. And they're going to push back on you. There's going to be phone calls to you, to the board, to say, I really want this to happen, and it's not fair. So, we really should address this. Um, it's, it's going to get worse, uh, kind of increase as we start to use the pavilion outside. What are our goals? But right now, there's a lot of organizations that we are either saying no or waiting to the very last moment to see what other insurance they can get, and that's costly, and it takes away from some of these organizations.
Well, a rider, a rider, a rider certificate for the day in that event is going to be an increased cost. But that is the methodology that one needs to go through to...
But then in that sentence, if we ask them to get the rider to give that additional cost, to Mr. Rizzo's point, well, then that's a burden on that organization to fund for that event. They're not making enough money to put in their coffers to head for the students. So, where do you want to go? What do we want to do?
Can we get a standardized limit of liability in these issues?
But we do. NICE is saying this is the standard that we want to have for your organization. So, once again, it's a million dollars and...
But I'm saying, I'm saying to have participants sign a waiver saying this is, this is a knowledge limit of liability. And we, you know, basically a rider to the policy saying that they're not going to, should anything occur, any damages would be limited to this amount.
Something to that degree would probably have to be vetted by our legal counsel. If they will allow us to have each participant sign a, a, a release, it might be an avenue to take. But that's something we all have to have that discussion with our, with our carrier.
Yeah.
That could be a possibility. But let's, give us the opportunity to, uh, to Desmond to go through and do some research. I know he's working on budget at this point in time. But if we can get the, the insurance carrier to come back and say, yeah, if you get releases from every one of the participants, that the district's not liable, and we're not liable. But not everybody's going to sign those releases. So, we have that battle too, so. Let's, let's vet this whole thing and then come back and have discussion at board level.
Well, yeah, but I, you know, uh, listen, this thing gets very tense as we head into a budget season. Right? I, conversations that might upset the public belong in, discussed in this office, uh, among other offices. So, I look forward to having more dialogue about this.
We will.
When you're having your dialogue, also look into field trips as well, and the events that are occurring inside our building with our own students, with our own clubs as well, um, to see if we can go back to pre-COVID where students have more access to outside of the classroom opportunities. That's all I have. Thank you.
First name's Aga, A-G-A, passing the lines, hello, audience. I want to go back briefly to the cell phone policy. Um, I think that, um, what I heard in, for a brief moment, can you answer if the proposal from the governor passes, which is effectively a bell to bell ban? And I think that she mentioned that the policies would have to be in place by August. Are you saying that there's possibility that the board would not, uh, implement that guidance from the governor?
No, I'm saying that the governor's, uh, policy allows for sanctioned and unsanctioned use during the day. It out, it, it doesn't want unsanctioned use, but it can, there can be periods of the day where there is sanctioned use. And I believe that our policy will fall under that sanctioned use.
So, your plan is to keep this policy versus changing it?
Well, no, if, if the governor comes up with a policy that seems to be, if, if ours doesn't seem to be in sync with the governor's policy, we'll definitely...
We've got a legal team that'll look at, as, as soon as something legal happens, our attorneys will share a briefing with us, and we'll take a look. But I believe the way it appears right now, though, there can be some s- sanctioned use during the day. And her policy allows for that.
Does she have an established policy?
Ultimately, what it comes down to, we have to bring...
I will email you what I've written.
She gave a whole, a bunch of presentations, it's written down, hundred seconds, it's there on the website, and it's effectively it. There is budget from the state as well to help mitigate. Essentially, all cell phones will have to be put away for the whole school day. That's a lot of logistics.
Look for those sanctioned and unsanctioned words. They're in there, at least the version I wrote.
Okay, anybody else? Motion to adjourn. Motion by Jen, second by Ed. All of the favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.